Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting of the regular scheduled meeting for August 20th for the City of Hudson. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Birchall.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yaku.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, T. Winkle.
Here.
District Five, Hoggett.
Here.
District Six, Banzo.
Before we get started, can the people in the back hear everything? Okay, alright. At this point in our meeting, we take comments or suggestions from citizens present on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you have any issues that you'd like to address the council, you may come up and do that at this time. Usually it's limited to three minutes. So, Mr. Schoberg?
Thank you. My name is Roy Schoberg. I live at 1108 Vine Street, and I happen to be the current vice president of the Hudson Joint Area Library, and as well the chairman of the Finance Committee. This morning, I attended the Administration Committee meeting at the County Government Center. And unfortunately, there is still no solution in sight for the county funding of our library and all the other libraries. They're working hard on it, and I appreciate their efforts. It's a vexing problem. We've been working on it for six months. It's been six months since I first made known I discovered that we weren't -- we were overlooking this 4364 exemption amount. And it's now two minutes left in the game. Women's basketball sectional final, we're down by 12 points. Our backs are against the wall here, folks, and we need a solution. So I sent out a request today at 2:52 PM, and I asked for three things. One thing, I asked Neil, our finance officer, to please update the records with a new equalized value. Neil responded about a half hour later with exactly what I had asked for. So Neil, if you're in the audience, thank you so much for that quick response. That's going to be a good tool for all of us. The second thing I asked for was a request for the city attorney and the Assistant Corporation Council to meet in order to counter the original opinion by the Department of Revenue, which said that if we disband the joint library and the levy amounts that are no longer allowed from the other municipalities cease, that opinion said that we could not transfer that over to us. So we wouldn't be allowed to increase our levy amounts because that interpretation, that opinion from the Department of Revenue, was saying that it was transferred to the county, not to us.
You have a minute left, Roy.
Okay. And what I gleaned from that opinion, that it was weak, and there were some faulty thoughts in that opinion, and I'd like to have that one addressed. So I've asked this board to take a look at that again. And then finally, again, we only got a minute left in the game, we need some leadership here. So I'd like someone to call a summit meeting between our city government people, as well as the library board and the county, to all gather in one room. It might take four hours, but let's get together, let's work this thing out. We need someone to come in and make some baskets here, because right now, we're running out of time, folks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Come on up, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Castro, 1312 Third Street, Hudson. Let's see, with school approaching, I would like the City Hudson to reconsider putting the stop sign back at Forest Street and Vine. It seems to be the route that most children take to cross Vine on their way home. So I'd like that issue to be reconsidered and the stop sign put back. Also, the principal at the school is now going to consider hiring a crossing guard for that block, so that's an additional expense. So if they could please consider that, that would be great.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, item four is the consent agenda items. Madam Clerk?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of August 6, 2012; to approve claims for payment in the amount of $356,487.14. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website; to approve the issuance of one regular operator's license for the period August 21, 2012 to June 30, 2012; to award the fuel contract to Consolidated Energy for the period September 1, 2012 to August 31, 2013; to approve the request of Ken Smith, All-American Segway; to provide guided tours for 10 persons per tour on segways from the Afton-Lakeland area over the I-94 Bridge through Lakefront Park and return to Minnesota; to approve the installation of pedestrian crossing signs on Vine Street at Forest Street and update the crosswalk paint on all four sides of the intersection; to approve the installation of pedestrian crossing signage at the crosswalk on West Canyon Drive near Canyon Boulevard for east and westbound vehicular traffic funded by the Public Works Department sign budget; to place and file the quarterly report of the library director and the water utility director; the annual report of the assessor; the monthly report of the finance officer; and the Public Utility Commission minutes of August 14, 2012. That is all.
Move for approval. Roll call, please.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Banzo?
Yes.
Madam Five, request of Azula Tequila for extension for the -- did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry, Planning Commission. Certificate of Compliance for an indoor gun range, 1920 Crestview Drive, John Monson Bill's Gun Shop and Range. Mr. Darnold?
Mr. John Monson is proposing an indoor gun range and a gun sales shop in 1920 Crestview Drive, which is the former movie theater. The City of Hudson did amend the zoning code to permit indoor gun ranges upon approval of a certificate of compliance. What is before your consideration night is approval as certificate of compliance. Planning Commission reviewed it and recommends approval of certificate of compliance for indoor gun range, 1920 Crestview Drive, as proposed by John Monson, Bill's Gun Shop and Range. If there's any questions, I'd be pleased to answer those for the common council. Mr. John Monson from Bill's Gun Shop and Range is also here tonight answering questions.
Questions?
No, I move for approval of a certificate of compliance for 1920 Crestview Drive by John Monson, Bill's Gun Shop and Range.
Second.
Discussion. No questions?
Is that with the contingency from the --
Yes, that includes also them to incorporate the fire department comments in their plans. Correct.
Is that okay with the motion, person? Okay, seconded, is that okay?
Yep.
Everybody take a look at those three items. That's okay with everyone? Okay? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to the request of Azula Tequila for extension of the 2012-2013 liquor license. If you were in Finance, they were here from Eau Claire, and they talked about they didn't get the building turned over to them. They still haven't got it turned over, but there's been significant progress made on the building, and I believe they will have it done by the end of November. And that's what they're requesting. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? We have no pending liquor license right now, and we have --
Application.
Application, excuse me, and we have --
Well, I was going to mention this later, with the new change in population, we'll have additional licenses available, so there will be five available. We've redone all the calculations, so.
Five liquor?
Five Class B, yes.
Move for approval for the 90-day extension.
Second.
Is there a second? You second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Six, consider squad car purchase and sale of auction of older vehicles. Mary?
Okay, so, public safety, we discussed replacing some older fleet. By doing so, it'll help or try and aid in the police department budget, fuel efficiency, maintenance efficiency. We will auction three cars and replace the three cars with one. That would reduce the fleet by two and allow the police department to have a new, more efficient Explorer, which will serve a dual purpose, which they need for pulling certain things and also, obviously, for policing. We approved in safety $35,000 to come out of the capital budget. The sale from the auction, the auction, the cost or the money that comes in from the auction will go back into the equipment fund of the police department.
Marty, you have any comments about the vehicle? If you want to come up, and we have -- we purchased one last spring.
We purchased a 2013 SUV from Ford. It has the EcoBoost in it, which is a six-cylinder, which gets, obviously, good fuel economy, but it also has got a pretty good engine in it. We had the armed robbery a couple Sundays ago, and this vehicle was able to keep up with a Crotch Rocket motorcycle, so it obviously can keep up with most anything. It will serve our purposes, and it's all-wheel drive, so when winter hits, it's going to be much better for us to get around the streets. Obviously, we're going to be getting rid of three vehicles and replacing it with one, so obviously, where our costs are going to go down, we won't have as many sitting in the fleet. So we're asking for $35,000 because last year, or this spring, when we got the bids in, they were around $26,000, and it cost me anywhere between $7,000 and $9,000 to outfit and equip the new car.
Good response from the officers, as far as anyone that are using it, they enjoy it.
No, they really enjoy it. There's a lot more room in it. Obviously, it does have get-up-and-go, so they're responding to calls, and, you know, there's no lag time. And they like the new designs that we have on it. It's been well-received by the public as well as the officers.
Okay. Any questions for Marty?
I move we approve the purchase of a new squad vehicle for up to $35,000 and proceed with the sale, auction of three vehicles listed.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just a comment. I'm not opposed to the purchase. I guess I'd like some reconsideration given to the notion of selling vehicles and putting the money into an equipment fund. It comes out of capital to begin with, and then we sell the vehicles and we use it for something else. I know in public works, typically, when vehicles are sold, that money goes back toward the purchase of new vehicles. I know it's what's been done in the past. I just think with budgets getting tighter, we need to consider using those funds for capital purchases, so, to help defray, you know, so maybe we take less out of long-term capital funding and defray some of that expense. That's what I think people would do at home. You know, if you sell a car and you need a new one, I think most families would take that money and probably apply it to a new vehicle. I think it's the responsible thing to do, and we're taking capital money and putting it into an operating item. So, just a comment, and again, not against the purchase, but would like to see the proceeds used differently.
Can I just say one thing in defense of why it's going back into the equipment fund?
Certainly.
I discussed with Marty putting it back into the capital budget for the very same logic that Lori has expressed, and Marty explained to me how the equipment fund is used, and it's used to aid when we need equipment for the vehicles, various things for the vehicles, when their budgets are becoming, when we're starting to get over budget. The equipment fund has never maxed 20 grand, as stated in Finance, it's at 14 right now. And Marty, what's your overall operating budget? $186,000?
Correct.
That's how much we use to operate the police department. The rest of the $3 million goes towards salaries. So I don't, I think a little extra aid to contain, to aid the police department in operations is not the worst thing in the world. That's why I agreed to have Marty continue with the equipment fund versus pushing going back to the capital budget.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
I guess what I heard in Finance was sometimes it's used for, you know, purchasing guns or, it's not an issue of, you know, I think if it's used to maintain vehicles, that makes sense, but just, I don't like to see it getting allocated for something that's not related to the fleet, so, that's all.
Do you want a recommendation to go back to public safety, to look at that, or?
I'll leave it to them. I'm just making my thoughts now.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Seven, consider establishing a city policy for recovery of delinquent personal property taxes. Neil?
Currently, and it might help us to, for a little bit of background, for real property taxes, the taxes that you pay on your house, if those taxes are not paid, what would happen is the county accepts full responsibility for those. They make the communities, the other taxing jurisdictions, such as the school district, WITC, and the state, they make them whole, and they bear the responsibility for collecting real estate taxes in the future, then they have the power, obviously, for a tax sale. For personal property taxes, those are the taxes on furniture and fixtures used in a business. The city has the full responsible, responsibility to collect these. So we are essentially, when the taxes are settled at the end of the year, the city has the full responsibility of collecting these because we essentially make the other taxing jurisdictions whole. One of the things that we don't have right now is a policy as to how to proceed on this. The reason it's really coming before you, and why it's truly important this year, is that for the taxes that were levied this year, there is a change in state statute. Previously, we were allowed for any taxes that we didn't collect within a year. So last year, the settlement was in February. If we didn't collect the taxes within a year, we could charge back those other jurisdictions and get back to us that portion of the money. And, you know, we would, then, you know, what we're really out is our 25% of those monies. It's roughly 25%, you know, the city's portion of the total tax burden. What's going to happen with the taxes that were levied this year is because of the change in state statute, the only way that we can charge back these other municipalities are if the businesses have declared bankruptcy or are no longer in that location. So what it does is, for businesses that are just truly delinquent and not paying us, unless we initiate some type of effort to collect those, we're, you know, we're fronting the full cost. State statute does give us six years to recover these funds, and, you know, what I, you know, I guess what we're looking for is some direction so that we can, once these taxes are turned over to us for collection. We know we have a policy and a track as to how we can get these without sending, you know, going for, some of these are for small amounts of money, where we're sending out monthly bills. Chances are, if you send out monthly bills on some of these smaller amounts for 12 months straight before you charge them back, we've spent more on mailing and processing than we would have realized from the taxes.
Staff recommended a policy that you can see on your sheet, your issue sheet. Any comments on those? I think it's a good policy to adopt, and if there's someone that would like to make a motion to approve it, then we can talk some more about it. I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, issues? Again, trying to collect the money that we, that we're old.
What's the total amount of one tax?
It's in the front page there, John.
Well, you can see what it is by year, and one of the difficulties that I'm having right now is there are some businesses, and I really need to sit down, probably with community development, to find out who's truly still in business. I know I've gone through, through the Department of Financial Institutions, where corporations are registered, and I have a whole listing of those that I know are bankrupt or out of business, but then there are some others. But there are a couple of key businesses that are operating in the city that will probably get, you know, the initial attention.
And again, these are personal property taxes of a business, that, equipment, whatever, it's not, it's not property, and I don't believe we can, we cannot file against their property on this.
We cannot, no.
Any other questions or comments?
So Neil, if, if an entity does change its name from year to year, how does that work?
That's going to be a real tough one, because I think, you know, you see companies, particularly with proliferation of LLCs and things like that, it's very, very tough to chase those down, you know, and, you know, you know, we can probably go to small claims court, but a lot of times, if they have an LLC and all of a sudden they change, you know, what assets does that LLC have? And I mean, that's one of the other reasons that, you know, the proposal here is a pretty tight timeline after these are there, because if you wait, you know, if you start action within a month versus waiting for 12, 13 months, your chances of collecting are better.
Sure. So if they shut an LLC down, our odds are probably not very good.
They're not very good. But then, you know, in that same respect, you know, we're, you know, what we will be out is only our portion of the money and not the portion that we've already, you know, transmitted and made, you know, made whole to the other taxing jurisdictions.
Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Application of Kiwanis Club at the Greater, of Greater Hudson for a temporary Class B license to sell beer on 9/8/12 from noon to 6:00 at Second Street Annual River City Block Party, 200 block of Second Street. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions on their application? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider closing times for restrooms at all city parks. I guess that was Tom, so Lori, are you?
Well, it came from parks. But, so the recommendation from the park board was that we close all the parks and that the restrooms are locked at each of the parks at 9:00 PM.
Okay.
Can I add something, Lori?
Absolutely.
I believe that the 10:00 PM is still the closing time. It's the restrooms that are 9:00 PM.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Why, oh, sorry.
Wait.
I'll wait for a motion.
Okay.
Well, that's, this is ridiculous. You keep the park open until 10:00, but they can't use the bathrooms only up until 9:00. You're asking for a problem. Either they're going to break in, break in, or they're going to do it outside. I mean, let's be consistent with it.
Well, that's what I was going to ask why we're, I was going to ask why we're keeping the park open until 10:00, if both bathrooms are closing at 9:00. That was going to be my question, so.
Kurt, maybe you can enlighten us on the discussion at Park Board. I know why it came up when Tom brought it up earlier, and that was --
Well, the reason it's brought up is because of safety
Yeah.
-- of his crew that needs to go out and lock the restrooms.
I agree with locking the restrooms at 9:00.
Sure.
But I agree with Randy that maybe the parks should be closed at the same time as that restroom to avoid undue circumstances, such as Randy is referring to.
And I'm not sure that works unless we go with what we did up at Prospect Park, where it's dusk to dawn because of daylight savings, 9:00, 9:30, it gets dark in the summer, there's people in the park.
I absolutely think 9:00 in the summer, Lakefront Park, is too early.
Yeah.
It's still light out.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's dusk to dawn at the Prospect Park.
And I know that dusk till dawn was talked about as problematic for the police to enforce, because whose opinion is?
Right.
Are there some parks, I'm sorry, Kurt, go ahead. I was just curious if there are some parks that are more likely to be closed or not used after 9:00 versus the downtown parks. I mean, clearly, there's people in there till, you know, whenever, so, and I would assume that in the, at dusk in the winter, at 5:30, people are probably still walking in the park kind of thing, so, I don't know, maybe there's some parks, oh, Tom's not here, he's out of town, that might be, you know, that are out in the outlying areas that by the time they get downtown or somewhere, they could, you know, start at 9:00 and finish at 10:00 kind of thing. I don't know.
Marty, could you address that at all, if it's, how's it working at Prospect Park? Dusk to dawn? And whether or not, you know, can you have difference, I mean, in my opinion, whose opinion is it, dusk or dawn? The cops are going to win. That's their opinion.
Well, we might win in issuing the ticket, but then we have to go into court and have to prove the time and when it happens. Obviously, when it's dark out, it's dark out, that's not an issue. The problem when we go into dusk to dawn, it changes every day, and, you know, from a legal perspective, that's where you got to make sure that you know what time it is when you issue somebody a ticket for being in the park.
So why, why can't, I agree there's a safety concern. Why can't our police, as they're policing the parks, lock the bathrooms?
If you want us to, we can, but if I've only got two officers out and they're busy, they're not going to get to the parks until it's
Yeah.
-- they get time to do it. And just a week ago, we were chasing a gentleman around
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Up on the hill with a stolen vehicle for three hours.
Yeah.
Is this something that could be left to discretion of the Public Works Director? Or do we need it because of issuing tickets? Do we need a specific?
We're just talking about locking the bathrooms, right? I mean, we're kind of --
Well, the other, the other issue in it, I believe, is signage. And could that still be up to the Public Works Director? Probably.
I mean, because I think, depending on the time of year, you're going to be going 9:00, oh, now we did it at 8:00, now we need it at 10:00, and I don't know.
I mean, obviously, the restrooms aren't open in the winter, right? So we're just talking about summer months, and why can't we just have signs that say, "Restrooms open till 9:00 PM"? It doesn't seem complicated, but...
I'd rather
Go ahead.
I'd rather see it left to the discretion of the Public Works Director. So let's not micromanage it.
Well, we had a recommendation from the park board, so I would just make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
Which is locking the restrooms at 9:00 PM? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm still going back to, you know, at Lakefront or other places, I mean, many people are still in the park till, when does the park close? 10:00 or 11:00?
10:00.
10:00 o'clock, so, I mean, it's fairly frequent, and can we make an exception for Lakefront Park, or, I mean, I see down, people, a lot of people just, you know, walking their dogs and later at night, so.
And to address the safety issue, if we get that bid back on, what, did they talk about the battery-operated locks?
Time locks.
There hasn't been progress made on that, I don't believe.
They're working on it, I don't know what they found out. We did have a lot.
Yeah, Tom has worked with at least one locksmith.
I think your idea is a reasonable one, that Lakefront would be, you know, maybe the last one that's locked, and, I mean, I think that's something Tom can speak to, but I don't want to undo what the park board recommended, but I think Lakefront Park is an exception.
If we went with discretion of the Public Works and Park Director, I can't guarantee it, but I'm confident it would be 9:00. And he's purely looking out for the safety of his
Yeah, that's important, is the safety of his employees.
And
But I can see what John's saying about Lakefront Park, I mean, if Tom wants to make that an exception, that's his, you know
Well, the other thing is, I Well, the other thing is, I, I think we could ask, and, you know, it is what it is, but there's going to be an order that they get done.
Right.
And hopefully, we could have Lakefront Park be last.
And Kurt, could I ask, did you guys talk about the prospective timeline of adding these time locks before we put, changed the signs and the, the closing times of everything?
I don't believe we have a timeline, no.
Because
Tom is working.
the trust funds also would help pay for those on that.
We have signs up and out that say when the bathroom's closed, so we're not changing anything as far as signs.
No.
We're just closing them earlier.
So I think it should go back, park board, come back with a recommendation with the locks and a price. Instead of just changing it to nine o'clock. Be consistent.
Well, I, I believe that once we have a, a timed lock, at that point, the 10 o'clock is not an issue at all, because
Let's look at it.
it'll self-lock, so.
Let's look at it this way, Randy, by the time we get that in, the way government works, it's gonna be, went down to be closed anyways, so then we can change it next time.
Well, we can make a decision right now, the park board's advisor.
The safety of the employees right now is more important, so.
Obviously.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion and a second to close at nine o'clock. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Update on projects.
Okay, we started the 2012 street improvements with a neighborhood meeting on Thursday night. We had approximately 25 people from the Grandview Drive neighborhood and about seven people from the alley. We handed out information about what was gonna be happening. We gave them a little refrigerator magnet with contact numbers, email addresses, and I know there's many people that still don't have email or internet access, and we're gonna post weekly information at the bank of mailboxes for those people. So we're trying to keep everybody informed of what's gonna be happening. Work has started. If you were out on Carmichael and Vine Street today, you could see they did a, a pad ramp, and they're working on raising that catch basin in that turn lane, which is gonna end up trying to smooth out the bump. I said previously, the only way to really fix it is to rip out the entire curb and gutter. So we, we're working on that. Uline, they've been working on the, the fire protection loop, and also they are talking about doing some grade changes out there, and Uline's working with city staff on those changes. Procentive, the contractor is pouring the footing walls, and there hasn't been much happening out there on the grading of the site. Any questions?
I'd like to compliment you, I've had some calls from the residents on Grandview, complimenting the, having the meeting and keeping them well informed on how it's gonna go.
Thank you.
If you can control the rain, that would be.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yep.
That'd be nice, so, yeah, the meeting went really well, and there were some really good questions that were brought up, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody have any questions? Karen, on any, anything else? Okay, old business. Docks on par, uh, public property on First Street between Orange and St. Croix Street.
Mr. Mayor, uh, city attorney advice, I will recuse myself.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in the vice of League of Municipality Council, I also recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. All right, the five of us decide, what, what do we wanna do tonight, folks? You wanna hear from people we haven't heard from? You want more information? What's your, what's your, what's your thoughts? I'm sure there's people here that wanna speak. How many people here wanna speak tonight? Two, three, four, five, six? Yep? So what time element do you wanna? Is there more, do you want people with new information, or?
New information would be preferred.
I'd like new information.
I think anyone who's not spoken.
Okay. Anyone that hasn't spoken before?
But we absolutely need to have a time limit.
Okay. What do you, what do you wanna put your time limit on? Three minutes, four minutes? We use three, four, and five?
I would say three.
Okay?
I agree.
Kurt?
Three should be adequate.
Mary?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. All right, and if, and if, so, why don't we, uh, the people that would like to speak, we'll let you speak, and then after we're done, at that point, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna do the, our work, and we won't ask for public comment after that point, so make your points now, because we're not gonna answer questions after that. We're gonna let everybody have a chance to speak, but then we're gonna deliberate among the, the five of us. So who's ever wants to speak? Paul? Excuse me, Roxanne, Paul jumped up first. Three minutes, and if you give us your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Paul Rodamacher, 1415 Boulder Court. I'm chairman of the park board. Just want to pass on, in case you aren't aware, that the park board unanimously recommended against selling any parkland, and also unanimously is in support of the removal of the docks as they are illegal and against the city ordinance. Tom Zulley is responsible for overseeing the operations of the parks, including the water-related areas, and the park board recommended to him that he send a 10-day letter of, of, of removal. I really hope that, that you think of the legacy that being council members that are stewards of the city, and to sell property, park property, I think is really irresponsible. Uh, this, uh, history has a, has a way of repeating itself, and if you look at back in the late 50s, early 60s, when we sold a good chunk of Prospect Park to the Hudson Hospital for $10 with the, with the promise of getting that back for $10, that never happened. Of course, good intentions were that, that would happen, but you have new ownerships, I, I like the people on First Street, I know some of them, some of them, but we don't know what's gonna happen after they leave. And it cost us a million dollars to get Prospect Park back, and to give up our riparian rights, um, and our, our rights as ownership of that, of that land, and our goals of having a path going all the way around of, of, of the lake there. I think you really need to take that in consideration, and also, uh, you know, our long-term plan is to acquire park property and not sell it. So again, park board recommends, obviously, don't sell the, uh, the property and remove the docks as they are legal, as city attorney has stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Roxanne?
Good evening, my name is Roxanne Hanson, I live at 1001 First Street, and, um, my talk is about six minutes, so I'm gonna cut pieces out of it, um, but I'll get started. The walking path lands are currently at a crossroads. At the southern Orange Street boundary and at the northern St. Croix Street boundary, work has already begun to clear and develop a still thriving natural ecosystem into more public picnic and gathering areas. This clearing and planting of non-natives is slated to continue throughout the entire pathway. What is being overlooked on this, all these issues, is how that plan destroys recreational opportunities for current users of the path. Those users include birders, photographers, wildlife researchers, naturalists, and teachers hosting student field trips on nature studies. Taking away the docks is one part of those first steps to transform a natural jewel into a traditional manicured and stripped par, public recreational area. My hope is that the city council can reverse this destructive trend and help the pathway develop into its maximum potential as an environmental experience for the public. This narrow stretch of waterfront land is unlike the rest of the Hudson Park system. Instead of lawn, porta-potties, and picnic tables, it boasts natural prairie grasses, hummingbirds, and yellow finches. There's no electricity for band concerts or concessions, but there are majestic 100-year-old cotton tree boughs, favorite perches for bald and golden eagles. There aren't any swing sets or sand pits, but that doesn't seem to bother the otters and the beavers, deftly swimming in and out from under the docks. Sunset photographs taken at the dyke are dotted with no-boat parking signs that stand erect like soldiers on the beach. Sunset photographs along the river path include nostalgic train bridges and flocks of trumpeter swans. If you're quiet and quick, you might even spy a regal blue heron roosting comfortably at the end of a dock. What is so amazing is that all of this is found right here. No need to drive to a county or state park, we have it right here, and it's currently thriving. It is a natural environment walking path we, as homeowners, seek to maintain and protect. To extend the traditional park philosophy, philosophy to this special untouched area of the walking path does a disservice to Hudson residents and its visitors. We envision an environmental walk filled with native plant species, butterfly gardens, animals, and a river view, not more mowed grass and picnic tables. You can find these parks all over the Hudson area. The bay is one of the most unique aviaries on the lower, lower St. Croix. The unique combination of the railroad bridge and water inlet from the Willow River have created a habitat that has marked this bay as a destination for hundreds of bird species on their migratory paths. The exciting news, again, is that it is right in the heart of downtown Hudson.
Thirty seconds, Roxanne.
All right. I'll skip to the end. Well, let's see. It is right in the heart of downtown Hudson. The bay is currently healthy, the shoreline pressures have been held to a minimum, largely due to the presence of private docks that give most of the public the perception that the shoreline was private and off limits. If the shoreline clearcutting continues, blah, 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 we homeowners along the path are willing to do whatever we can to protect this unique area for everyone. The private docks can work in the public's favor by allowing funding, a protection buffer, even shelter for fish and wildlife. Please support us in protecting the area for the path users, the wildlife, and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Sharon.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, I'll be very brief. What I'd like to say to you tonight is, please don't sell the valuable city asset on First Street, the parkland budding the river. There's no opportunity for the city to obtain any other, oh, I forgot to tell you who I am, I'm sorry. I'm Sharon Nortonbaum, and I live on Front Street in Hudson. There's no opportunity for the city to obtain any other frontage for parkland on the river. If you decide to sell the land, I have some questions for you. How would you determine a valuation for the parcels involved? The assessed value of other city properties abutting the river could serve as a guide to evaluate prices for the land in question. I did a little research on the assessment rolls. The average assessment of the properties on Front Street, which is where I live, um, the average assessment for all of the 10 properties on Front Street is $1,390 per running foot of land frontage, not including improvements. The assessments range from $787 a foot to $1,700 a foot on the Front Street South properties. I would hope, if you do decide to sell this parkland, that proper appraisals would be done before any sale of the parkland would occur. If the land is sold, I'd ask you, would all Hudson taxpayers be given an opportunity to purchase a parcel, perhaps by a lottery method? It would seem only fair that all taxpayers and citizens who have supported the parks with their real estate taxes could be offered an option to purchase riverfront land. I realize that Hudson is in a budget crunch, most municipalities are, but to part with this river frontage is a one-time fix, and in my opinion, a very short-sighted decision for city residents. Thank you for your consideration, and I don't wish I were sitting in your chairs.
Thanks, Sharon. Anyone else? Mr. Hanson?
My name is Dean Hanson, 1001 First Street. My job has been to do a lot of research. Uh, anything that I find, I've been sharing with Liz as we've been going along, um, and so I dropped off a, a pamphlet to most of you tonight, uh, which you can look at, starting with an original deed, and I did this with my property. An original deed of 1856, describing the west property line as the water, the first transfer of record 1877, describing the rest of the property line as water, describes 1001 First Street as 2A, 140 feet, then they did a correction deed, 130 feet, the CSM came back at 140 feet, uh, which, which had no balance of land of the railroad. There's deed number four shows the date of completion of railroad survey staking and railroad property. Note, the west property line is defined by this survey, and that's item number four. Item number five is a map with dimensions showing railroad west property line, 1128, 1878. Note, the railroad survey shows a water line some distance from the west property line of the survey. In other words, there's land between the city property and the water. Number six deed from the railroad to the city in March 1988. Note, this deed matches a description of a map stated in item five. In other words, I, we went through the deed that the city received from the Chicago Northwestern Railroad, copied that down through the map, and it's, it's the same item. So that survey was done in 1878, it still exists today, and that's what the city bought. My statements at the end are, uh, I, Dean Hanson, I've maintained the west property stakes of the CSM, and in reality, I, the stakes for building my new house down there, I put those stakes and I left them there, so they're put by the surveyors, and I have measured from the west stakes, 112.63 feet, which the map shows, to the west, uh, west property line of the city, as the map shows, and there is land between the city's west property line and a water line, uh, which belongs to me, deed A and number one, dated in 1800, and in essence, the railroad, though it surveyed, did not claim the land between the west property line, the water, and the railroad, never sold this to the city. Therefore, I'm the original owner. All right, water elevation change, the river changes water elevations since its creation. Uh, there were times the city property was totally submerged, and that was as late as the last flood stage, and in times when the bay was pasture land, uh, and no action of washing in of land or taking away of land, in fact, the taking away of land is probably the only action that's going on. This is not what affects water elevation, it's an act of nature controlled by the Army Corps of Engineers today by the lock and dam system, and note, the water at its present elevation is there approximately eight to 10 months a year, except when flooding occurs. So simply, two months a year, it's touching city property, and eight months a year, it's touching a property that I'm claiming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have someone over here.
Hello, Tom Smith, 927 Third Street. This is my third time speaking, but I feel I must come up every time this comes up, because my alderperson is recused, he's one of the Lakefront homeowners, and so we need a voice, and, uh, I'm not a real estate attorney. I would hope that the city attorney or somebody the city could hire could solve once and for all the, um, issue that Mr. Hanson just raised. Who knows? But, please take action. I was walking down the Dyke Road this last Sunday, and the beach at the end of the Dyke is now peaceful. Six years ago, that was the Wild West. Boaters would move in on Friday afternoon, and they'd have a carnival all weekend, and it wasn't for families. You guys made a decision and took that back for us, now it's parkland again. Same thing here. Uh, I see it as black and white. Please do your research, find out, uh, if what Mr. Hanson said holds any water, and, keep this string of riverfront parkland for all the citizens of Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Jeanie Castro, 1312 Third Street. Um, I too am a citizen of Hudson for the last 18 years. My daughter jogs down on that park, and I walk there almost daily. Um, I would like to see it remain Hudson Park, uh, and it can be preserved as, as a wildlife park and kept in the, in the beauty of the riverfront, but I think it needs to stay with the people of Hudson. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Public City Council, I know I've spoken before, uh, but we keep changing the topic, so now it's a different topic that we're discussing today than other times. My name is Sarah Atkins, and I reside at 925 First Street. Is that picking me up? Okay. Um, as Roxanne suggested and explained, we homeowners want the, to ensure the future of the walking path is a mostly natural, environmentally healthy area, offering Hudson residents variety to their park experiences. In discussions with path users, we've heard some great ideas. It seems most everyone wants it to remain what it is today, long into the future. It's interesting to contrast the bay's shoreline today with a photograph that is in the hallway outside these doors. Then, the shoreline was mostly vegetation. Today, it is mostly not. Human pressure on the shores has had a huge impact in the last 20 years. That picture is dated 1992. But the area behind the docks today has largely been protected from human pressure. There you will find a great deal of variety in the vegetation, driftwood. There you will find a great deal of variety in the vegetation, driftwood, small trees, and grasses. This is now the best remaining area for fish spawning. This vegetation is what has kept our bay vital. Without the fish, there will not be the aviary that we now support. Without the docks these past years, this land too would have been subjected to that same destructive human presence. Docks have played a role in today's health of the bay. They can also play a role into the future. How does having the council allow docks benefit not just the dock owners? Docks promote the health of the bay, and that's healthy for everyone. But allowing docks could also enable so much more. In the sales scenarios, we see three. First, the city could sell all the land and retain an easement. Quite honestly, even we don't want anything to do with that. It poses too many problems, and the city does need access to maintain the walking path and the light fixtures and the rest of the areas along the public area. But it is an option, and it is the sale option that would produce the greatest amount of revenue to reinvest in the park system. As a second option, the city could maintain ownership of the path and some area to either side of it for public access and city maintenance. Or thirdly, the city could retain all of the, I'll call it, the flat land. The city could retain all of that and sell only the land to the west, to the riverside of the walkway. This would be the smallest revenue producer of the three options, of the three sale options. So the question in a sale would then become, what would be the public interest in selling? Well, how about earmarking those funds for something really cool? How about a nature preserve that would include plant, animal, bird identification stations, viewing vistas, and more investment in native plantings? This could become an educational field trip destination area for our children. Or how about...
Give me a second, Sarah.
Thank you. Or using the funds for a historical museum. Another way to handle docks is through specialist assessments just to dock owners while the city retains ownership. This would generate a different level of funds, but still on a continuing basis. These funds could be used to finance a public wildlife observation pier located near the carry-in launch. It would be an extension of the walking path. Just think, a completely different perspective of the bay to enjoy. This would provide a unique benefit to the residents and visitors of Hudson. We've spent a tremendous amount of time working on ways we could think that this can work for all of us. We will always be the city's neighbors in this unique area. We care deeply about the health and vitality of the bay. We feel that in each of these scenarios, we show concern not only for our docks, but the ecosystem of the bay and all of the people who treasure this area for what it is today. It is our greatest hope that you will agree to make one of these options work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Scott O'Malley, 1024 Third Street. I'd like to address some concerns that have not been voiced before. Obviously, I agree with every member of the park board that this should stay a city park. A very good point was made earlier by Ms. Hanson that because of the presence of the docks there, people have thought it was private property, and therefore it hasn't been really used for recreational purposes by many of our Hudson residents. Removal of the docks would open that up for true recreation, especially when taken care by the park board. The city would have to find that this land, to be conveyed to private property owners, would no longer be suitable for recreational purposes. I believe you may find that a difficult case to make. There are also some incorrect assumptions that I believe have been circulating this issue ever since the beginning. One is that dock permits would be issued by the DNR and Army Corps of Engineers, who would currently say those docks have to go. In order for those docks to stay, those permits would have to be issued. There is no certainty that those permits would be issued at all. So you may be talking about land on which there will be no docks. Another assumption is that the adjacent property owners would be the purchasers of this property should you decide to put it up for sale. As Attorney Moncicry points out, that if the land is no longer suitable for recreational purposes as found by the city, it could be sold to provide, and here are her words, "provide greater benefit," including financial benefit for the city. There's no reason to suppose that the adjacent homeowners are going to provide the greatest or even greater financial benefit than someone else. If this isn't open to a bidding process, and I know of many people in the Twin Cities who would love to have a dock on the St. Croix River, I believe, for the benefit of the city, you need to consider bids from them as well. So there's no reason to believe that the adjacent homeowners are going to be the ultimate owners should you decide to put this up for sale. There is an analogous situation that we have here currently, and that is the contribution to our city park system by the Rotary. They put park benches in our parks. In this case, we have some private people who have put docks in our parks. And we do not have the Rotarians standing over the docks telling us who can use them and who cannot. Therefore, I think it's a fair thing to say that the docks currently there, for as long as they remain, can be used by anybody in the city, actually anybody at all. So I would advise all boaters in the Hudson area who wish to have a boat on the river, come and get it, because these are city docks on city property insured by city funds. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else?
Elizabeth McCormick, 1123 Briarwood Court. I initially spoke at the park board meeting when this came up, just extemporaneously, which is what I'm doing tonight as well, just simply because I'm a park user. A Wisconsin girl, and I love to use the parks. I don't own a dock, and I don't do the sailing club. I really don't do anything but. I love our running and walking paths, and I appreciate what a terrific job the city does maintaining them. I'm trying to follow the logic of what I'm hearing here tonight, which goes something like, "save a hereon, build a dock." I'm not seeing... I'm not able to connect that logic of that private docks are better than what public people would do on public land, because somehow if they put gasoline in a boat and run it on the river, it's not going to damage the environment as much as if any of us did it. I'm not getting that. And I'm also not understanding how the city can purchase public land for public use, and a small group of elite people can come along and say, "No, really, it's for our particular purposes." I'm not understanding that concept. When we buy a park, don't we buy it for communal use? And when I walk down that path, why is a private dock, which is something special above and beyond what the average citizen can do, why is that considered acceptable on a parkland? And that's completely escaping me. And I'm not understanding the logic of how somehow if we sell the land, that's going to even lead to more preservation. I have rarely seen parkland sold where it leads to increased preservation and stewardship of the land. The city bought this land. We purchased it. People are using it. We want to use it, and I think it should be and remain the special place it is. But I do not believe that you can buy something with the concept of doing the greatest good for the greatest number of people and then sell it with the idea of benefiting just a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joy Mestamacher. I live at 1015 First Street, and I wasn't going to talk today, but I can't sit here and not just feel the anger and the hurt in this room. And I feel it's dumped on us when I did trust our government when we bought our property. We bought it with a dock, and the head of the park board said, "Yes, it's okay to put a dock in." And so I guess what you're kind of saying then, if all these things happen, that people that you hire to be in positions of authority, their word isn't worth anything if they can't follow through on what they tell us. Just a couple closing things, and I also think that a lot of people are against the sale of this because they think somehow something's going to be changing on the walking path. I treasure that walking path. We put flowers on that walking path. We sprinkle the grass on that walking path. We take care of it. That's not going to change. The city will still own the walking path. But in all the scenarios that Sarah talked about, there can be agreements that are written to restrict what can and cannot be done to the shoreline. Right now, the people that use the park do not use the shoreline. It's murky from trumpeter swans. It's a natural... It's not a recreational area. You may put a kayak in there, but we have carry-in spots for kayaks. You may row a boat, but there's rowing areas for the rowers, and they're peaceful, and they're beautiful, and we enjoy looking out at them, just like we enjoy watching the hot air balloons come skimming along the water. It's a beautiful area. That will not change. The walking path and the trail will always be a city parkland. What we're talking about is the part of the park that no one uses. The rocky, sticky trees and dead logs and all those things down by the beach, that's for the wildlife. That's for the birds and for the fish and all those other things. The shoreline at the end of St. Croix Street is still a public area. The carry-in area is still a public area, and the shoreline will remain that way. The fragile ecosystem of the bay will be sheltered and will be continued to support the bounty of wildlife for everyone's appreciation. There's so many people taking pictures along there, and little kids looking at turtles and frogs and things that come up. Those that want the manicured part can come down to Lake Shore Park. There's a lot of places for that. We need diversity. It's not taking away the diversity to allow us to permit or lease or buy land so that we can maintain the docks we were promised. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's time to speak because when we start deliberation, we're probably not going to hear any more comments from the public. So if you have something you'd like to say or... Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. I forgot to mention one of the concerns I have, and that is if the land is sold to private individuals, the riparian rights go with the land, and that would include the Beer Can Island properties. So I hope you take that into consideration if you decide to sell any of that parkland. For private individuals to be able to have any control over what happens out on the island seems to be problematic to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want everyone to have an opportunity to speak, so... Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, you ready to go? Comments? Anyone want to start?
I've got two sets of documents here. One is from the city attorney regarding ownership of the land, and one just recently from Dean Hanson. And based on where I'm at, I'm going to have to take the information from the city attorney as what I believe is correct. So I'm starting with that as my basis. And I also believe that because of the increasing emotional issue this is creating, that we need to make a decision tonight, one way or the other, as to how we're going to proceed with this. And I don't care what that is, but I think it's only responsible for us as a council to take some action tonight. I have to say that, based on all the comments I've heard and based on all of the information that I've read, that my position is that this is a very important natural resource for the city of Hudson and all of the residents of the city of Hudson, and that we should protect it and keep it and not allow the docks to remain.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want to make a comment?
You know, we heard some comments tonight about not wanting a manicured shoreline. I don't think... Paul, I don't want to speak for the park board, but I've not heard anything in that regard that they're interested in manicuring that area. I think if anything, it's just the opposite. They're interested in maintaining it as a somewhat native area where there's native plants and where the wildlife can flourish. I'm not sure how docks promote that, but I think the park board, you know, I don't think we're talking about putting lawn and picnic tables down there. That being said, I... There's nothing compelling me whatsoever to consider selling that land. You know, it's occurred to me that if the city is interested in selling parcels of land that we own, by all means, we should do an inventory citywide of where there's city-owned property and see if it makes sense to sell some of that off for looking for a revenue source. This doesn't seem to be a good place to look for revenue. So with that, my position hasn't changed from the last meeting. I agree with Rich. No offense, Catherine, you've done an outstanding job, but we have spent thousands of dollars of taxpayer money trying to defend the indefensible, and I think it's time to make a decision, and I would suggest that we not sell the land and move toward removal of the docks.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll go next.
Okay.
Okay. First, I agree with Paul. I have a concern after doing more research about the riparian rights and protection of the city as far as that goes. And as you can see, I've been doing a lot of research, so... Which is what I asked for in defense to asking for another month, by the way. I think it was an important month to be able to get answers to questions that we didn't have last time. And I take offense to those citizens out there who felt that I was doing it for any other purpose than to just try and be fair and rational with my decision. As far as what Roxanne said, I do agree that there are native plants that need to be protected, and I urged the park board to look at their park plan again and make sure that this area stays protected as how it was originally planned. The other key to this with my situation, with my decisions right now, is what Sharon Norton-Baum said about Beer Can Island. I have a concern that wraps in with riparian rights, and that's where I've landed with my decision as far as how I think we should go forward as well. That's something that we can never get back, and I understand it was said last time. However, doesn't mean I fully understood everything last time to make my decision, and I wanted to do the research myself more to understand it. I would like to also say that I would hope residents out there don't take Mr. O'Malley's position and go start docking your boats over there until they're removed, because that would not be very wise. Sorry. So the one thing I'm concerned about is that this is... I don't think it's black and white still. It is... There is some muddy waters there. Like you said, we just received some information that I don't know what's correct or not. So I don't want to say that if something comes down the path two years from now, three years from now, that the city council won't look at it. I think that we need to always be open to understanding what's going on in the area. But I do tend to agree that we need to preserve this area, especially with the riparian rights. So I just am stating that for now.
Okay. Anything? Kurt, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, quickly. There's no doubt about it, the riparian rights are very valuable, invaluable actually, because they're not replaceable. I too just want it to be known that it was purely a research vote that I voted on, and we've gotten some really good answers. And we have had conflicting answers, no doubt, but, you know, there's no doubt it is a piece of property that the city, you know, holds that's valued by many. And much of the communication I've received over the past month just reinforced that. So with that, I believe that, you know, I still stand behind the vote that I made prior to research it more, as that's exactly what I did in that month, was research it as much as I could, so...
Okay. Well, the vote last month was to consider sale of the property, and I think what I heard from two of the people, Mary had received the information probably two months ago, started looking at it, and Kurt has been on the council for three months, four months. And so didn't have the information or didn't have as much information as the two... And so didn't have the information or didn't have as much information as the two public works people that have spent a lot of time on it. And so that was my rationale to say we need more time to take a look at this. And I think we've done that. I think we were fair. And I look forward to, I agree with Rich, that we should make a decision tonight, and let's move forward. And with that...
I'd like to make a motion first that we...
Okay.
That the city make a decision not to pursue sale of the land.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
You'd have to tell me what the objective of selling the land would be for me to change my mind on selling it, because I don't understand the objective of selling valuable property land that the city owns today. I know of no objective that would be suitable.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else you want to discuss on this?
I just want to read Section 181. Where are we at? Section of the ordinance says, Section 181-12J prohibits the parking of boats on city property in excess of four hours per day. Section 181-12J prohibits anchoring boats for longer than 96 hours. In effect, the private dock owners have parked or moored boats on city property in excess of four hours. City enforces these ordinance in other areas in Lakefront Park, but not with respect to the pathway and dock situation. This little piece of information is just something that, obviously, we have our ordinance books and stuff at home, but I just hope that when reading this, and especially since you, you know, said about the city attorney and the work that Catherine's done, which has been immense, that we, whatever decision we go forward with tonight, that we have this decision across the board on our lakefront properties, across board on our lakefront with other issues that may come in front of us in the future.
Okay. Is there anything else on this particular issue? Again, we have docks then, that we are not going to sell the property. Anybody want to address the issue of the docks that are there?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a motion made in our last meeting that the docks be removed by October 1st.
Okay.
Our ordinance actually states we can ask for removal within 10 days.
Okay.
I think we need to assume some responsibility for the inaction of previous councils and/or misleading statements made by individuals within the city who didn't have the authority to tell people it was okay to have docks. And I think in the, you know, spirit of being reasonable, I would like to entertain that, bring that motion back.
Okay.
That the city request removal of the docks by October 1st and that they not be put back in next spring.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
What does the ordinance say that boats have to be removed by? Is it, because Catherine hasn't here November 15th, and I don't know if that's from an ordinance or was she...
No, that was just... I mean, it's up to the city.
Do we have a date though?
Oh, maybe the mooring, but that's a separate issue, really. I mean, in terms of, this is a specific situation concerning specific docks. I don't know what the...
So the mooring is... Does anyone know?
I believe it is November 15th.
I think it's in the code.
I mean, if we're going to have them remove the docks, all I'm saying is I want to be consistent. That's what I was just saying before. So we should be consistent with the policy, whether it's not, we don't obviously have, you know...
Hold on.
Yeah, but the policy right now says 10 days.
Right, I get that.
So I'm trying to be gracious.
Oh, I know. I'm just, I get what you're saying, and I'm just suggesting that we... Let them finish out the season. So what the city... There's a season. I don't know what it is, if it's October 1st or...
November 15th is, and this is by ordinance.
I understand.
So if you wanted to change that, that would need to be done at a different time. But for the mooring, the boats are required to be out by November 15th.
That's the boats...
Well, in the mooring area.
I'll just...
On the dock issue, the ordinance says 10...
Right, obviously, but...
They're not supposed to be there in the first place, and the ordinance says 10 days.
Right. I appreciate that.
I think we're talking two different issues here.
Yeah.
Those are two different issues.
I'm not talking about the moorings. I'm simply just asking that if the city sees a season as November 15th, let them finish out the season, is what I'm saying. That's what I'm, all I'm saying. I have nothing, I don't care about the moorings. I just want to know what the city defines as a season for boating.
I don't think the city defines a season for boating. The city has a date for removing boats from the moors. The city has an ordinance that says no docks on public land, and it can be removed within 10 days. So I don't think there's any overall definition of the boating season.
Right. I'm just trying to make a... I don't know why this point is going over everyone's head. I mean, if the sailboats can stay in the water for, till November 15th, I just figured. Just leave it consistent all the way down the river.
Well, their boats can stay in the water till November 15th. They just can't stay on the docks that are illegally on city land. So they can, they're free to launch them, the boat launches, and park them where they can. They're free to go down to Marina, get a space, and put them out there till November 15th. So nothing is different.
I don't, you know, I'm not saying I'm not, I think I've moved a lot. I'm in favor of what's going on. I just thought we could, you know, just be consistent with what's the rest of the... But I guess that's too much to ask, so.
Well, if we wanted to be really consistent, I think we'd say we're going to follow the ordinance and say 10 days. And that's what, that's most of the feedback that I've gotten, and said, "Why have you let it go on this long? Why aren't you following the ordinance?" So I was...
I know, I'm not saying that you're doing this wrong. I'm just trying to see if we can nudge a little. I'm not, so.
Kurt, any thoughts?
I'd have to go along the line of Lori and say that October 1st is actually quite generous compared to what it could be.
Okay. Any other discussion? Now's your time. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other person communication for future agenda items? Okay. Any other person for future agenda items? City attorney?
No.
City administrator?
Very briefly, we'll have the 2013 schedule for council meetings out at the next meeting, just so that you can see any conflicts. Election results are in your packet. We had 11% turnout for the August primary, which we had 60. So it just depends, well, I'm sure we'll be visiting in November, and I'll be doing this reminder from now until election. If you have moved since the last time you voted, please come down to City Hall and get registered ahead of time. It'll make your life a lot easier on Election Day if you're already in the books and registered, so. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.